All right, we're going to call to order the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 5th. We're meeting in the Board of Supervised Hearing Room in Melody Lane in Bisbee. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting, and any item listed is open for discussion and possible action. Please note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published, meaning presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached versions. Members of the board may attend in person or via remote conferencing. Members of the public may also attend via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak on the agenda item or during the call of the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board by 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. We'll begin with an invocation from District 2.
Thank you. I'm going to read the invocation since the person I had who was going to read it couldn't attend at the last minute. So Heavenly Father, we come before you today seeking your divine wisdom and guidance as we prepare for this meeting. Grant us clarity of thought, integrity in our decisions, and the courage to act in the best interest of the citizens of this county. May our words be respectful, our actions be just, and our leadership reflect your grace and truth. Help us to listen intently, understand fully, and respond with discernment. We pray for unity among those gathered here today and for productive outcomes that will benefit our community and our county. Amen.
All right, next, Pledge Allegiance. Please rise, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
All right, we'll begin with a roll call. District 1. Morning, Mr. Chair Crosby is still here. All right, District 2.
Comas is here.
And District 3, Antonori is here. All supervisors are present and in person. We'll begin with a call to the public. We have five people scheduled to speak. First up is Mr. Alan Grover. Mr. Grover, are you here? There you are, sir. Sir, stuff the microphone, please. You have... This is, you can speak about any topic you wish. This is the general call to the public.
Oh, all right.
All right, so if you want to, can we move him? If you want to speak on 2516, we can move you to 2516.
Okay.
We can move him to the public hearing.
Okay, I, well, on the general call, I had asked for you folks a copy of your state bond pursuant to Chapter 38 or Title 38, each one of you. Did you get that through the email? Did you get notified by that?
I'm missing what you're talking about.
Well, it's the first time I've...
We got to be careful what we talk about because of the agenda item and the meeting law during this phase, so we can't really respond to you.
You get three minutes to say what you want to say.
Yeah, we can't, we can't do a Q and A. It's the state law prohibits us from doing that.
All right.
Because we have to agendaize it, so...
Okay, during this general call, I do ask for a copy of your bonds, each one of you, pursuant to Title 38. I'm entitled to a copy of your bond. And I'd like to know how you're going to deliver that, through the mail or personally at the window.
Thank you. Yeah, that's it.
All right, thank you.
All right, you still wish to speak on the other one?
2516?
He's referring to the public hearing, so yes.
Yes.
The resolution?
Yes. All right, we'll make your...
I'll wait until you open that up.
We'll add you back on there, and you can speak on that one, too, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is Mr. Daniel LaChance, Mr. LaChance. All right, sir, you have three minutes.
Morning, supervisors. It known here in this public meeting and in accordance with ARS Title 38, I make a demand for a certified copy of each of your Arizona bonds and request each of you to fulfill that requirement at the end of this meeting. Why? I've done everything else I can to make the board act constitutionally for all the citizens of Cochise County. I suffered and endured a, through a two-year civil lawsuit battle, to achieve a settlement which I hoped would force this board to act lawfully. I have spent countless hours researching, communicating in verbal and written communications with this board and other agencies, including legal professionals such as the Arizona Legislative Council. So I'm left with no other choice. You forced the citizens into the corner. It may be instructive to note that yesterday the DOJ advised that they would be presenting evidence to a grand jury for government crimes and corruption by the perpetrators of the disastrous Russiagate hoax. We are no longer working and living in an environment where government can operate with impunity and without accountability.
Thank you. All right, next up is Michael Schaefer, Mr. Schaefer.
My name is Michael Schaefer. I'm a business owner, a precinct commitment, and a legislative district chair, and I know why the country, our country, is in such bad condition. Because our prior elections were stolen, thank God, Trump was elected. I want to say that Cochise, I was down here before the 2020 to present evidence pertaining to our voting machines, that they may only be used in accordance with ARS 16442B. The voting machines may only be used in this state if they comply with the Help America Vote Act and if those machines or devices have been tested and approved, in effect certified, by a laboratory that is accredited pursuant to the Help America Vote Act. And they were not. We presented that to the Board of Supervisors. They expressed an interest in having a more formal hearing and debate on this topic. They reached out to Katie Hobbs, who in 2018 lost her election by 40,000 votes the night of the election, and miraculously, out of nowhere, 45,000 additional votes came in to allow her to be in that seat. So concerns there. And so I just want to commend that Cochise was the leading county in the state of Arizona, and I think the country, in trying to stop that issue and follow 442B, that the voting machines were not certified, and great thanks to Tom Crosby and Peggy Judd for that courage to do that. The questions for us to consider is whether or not we trust our government or have trusted our government. I know things are changing a little, our agencies, and most importantly, our elections and the process of the voting machines. I asked the people here today, do we have a responsibility to help save our country? So the Board of Supervisors, back in 2020, took action, notified Hobbs, and asked for evidence, and I am holding the letter of the evidence that was provided. Now, I happen to own an accredited test lab to the same accreditation that the labs that were claimed to have this accreditation. And they also needed an accreditation from the Election Assistance Commission, the EAC, which is a governmental agency. And the information that came back was full of holes, and therefore, I assert and believe can prove that those election machines were not usable in the state in accordance with the laws. Had that information come out at that point in time, it could have changed country. There's a meeting on this at 2:00 p.m.
All right, thank you, sir. Next up is Ms. Allison Morris. Is she present or online? She's online. Ms. Morris, you there?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we have you. You have three minutes, ma'am.
All right, good morning, supervisors, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Lowenheim for her promptness in replying to my emails and requests. I appreciate the changes that were made to the online speaker request form. This afternoon at 2:00, the board will allow Paul Rice to give a presentation on voting machine certification, just as Supervisor Crosby had wanted back in late 2022. This is an attempt to legitimize his reason for refusing to certify our election results, which are related to his current legal problems. Paul Rice, along with Brian Steiner and Daniel Wood, are well-known conspiracy theorists who reside outside of Cochise County. These three shared their baseless claims during our board's October 24th and November 18th meetings of 2022. Mr. Rice was given 30 minutes to speak because other speakers yielded their three-minute allotments to him. Brian Steiner was given 24 minutes, and Daniel Wood had 15 minutes. Together, they spoke for over an hour, and they weren't the only ones. This trio filed multiple unsuccessful lawsuits challenging the 2020 election results, one of which tried to decertify and rerun Arizona's presidential election based on supposedly improperly certified voting equipment. The Supreme Court denied the challenge, stating the petitioners lacked legal authority for the requested relief. You will also remember that Supervisor Crosby tried unsuccessfully, in his personal capacity, to decertify Arizona's 2022 general election based on unfounded issues with signatures on Maricopa County's ballots. These are all political efforts to sow doubt and chaos in our elections, mounted by individuals who were unhappy with previous election results. Note the absence of efforts to decertify the 2024 general election. The losing party accepted their loss, abstained from violent attacks on our Capitol, and did not spread baseless claims about election fraud or problems with voting machines. Supervisor Crosby is now facing two felony indictments and has made countless attempts to delay or dismiss his case. Since he has requested $300,000 for his legal fees, Cochise County taxpayers respectfully demand that he immediately disclose the total amount of money he has raised from the crowdfunding platforms GoFundMe and GiveSendGo, and any other funds or services he has received and continues to receive from the Republican Party, We the People Organization, or other sources that have not yet been publicly disclosed. Thank you for your prompt attention to this important matter.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, we have Ms. Sandy Troll. Ms. Troll, are you present? Oh, no, you are. You have three minutes, ma'am.
Hello, Sandy Troll from Sierra Vista. Our elections are unconstitutional. Third-party corporations are not to be involved. Runbeck, ESNS, Dominion, they're all involved in our elections. Ballots shall not be counted in secret. Corporations interfere with the chain of custody, machines, and processes. Elections are to be one-day, paper ballots, voter ID, and no mail-in ballots. This jail tax election is a legislative referendum in which a legislative, a legislature puts proposed legislation up for popular vote. So the 60% majority would apply to this, to pass it. Calling it a question does not make it not a referendum. The population is decreasing, and the crime is decreasing, so we do not need a capacity of 600 for the new jail. Sales tax is a regressive tax, which burdens low-income earners more as it takes more percentage of their money. Sales taxes take up larger shares of low-income household budgets. It is not the taxpayers' fault that the jail was neglected due to improper maintenance. A $293 million budget should be used to build the new jail that you guys already have. And I just want to give a couple statistics. 15.5% of the population in Cochise County are living below the poverty line, which is higher than the national average of 12.4%. The largest demographic living in poverty are females aged 25 to 34. And 24.6% of the children in Cochise County are living below the poverty line. And I have a quote from Austin O'Malley, "In levying taxes and in sharing sheep, it is well to stop when you get down to the skin." Thank you.
Order, Mr. LaChance. There's no response during the public comment, please. All right, next, we will move on to the agenda items. First is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 4, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve consent agenda items 1 through 4.
A second?
All right, second motion before the board is to approve consent agenda items 1 through 4. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. All right, next up, we will, I guess we'll go to the public hearings, and let's... First, I need a motion to go to the public hearing. Okay, the motion and do a public hearing?
I move that we, I motion that we move to public hearing.
All right, so, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we were going to call to order the public hearing. All right, we have, staff presentation goes first. Ms. Goman, you want to do that, or do we have somebody coming in?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay.
So Chairman Antonori, members of the board, today we have the public hearing on, to order the continued establishment of the Cochise County Jail District pursuant to ARS The board called this public hearing in Resolution 2516. Your hearing today will be to determine the public interest, convenience, and necessity for the continued establishment of the jail district upon voter approval of the excise tax election, which occurs on November 4th. We are doing this based on the situation we find ourselves in. The board, previous board established the jail district back in 2022, and then they held the tax election in May of 2023. That fully established the jail district. Now that we've repealed that tax as of July 31st, it's recommended by statute, statute doesn't really address this particular situation, so our legal counsel has recommended that we have this public hearing for the board to consider continued establishment. Following this public hearing, there is an action item to approve the continued establishment. That's item number six. I'll present more on that depending on the board's outcome of the public hearing.
Okay, and from the legal perspective, just to be clear, I think, Mr. Cray, the rationale was that the settlement agreement and the opinion we got from the court was that, that there was no abolishment or dissolving of the jail district, so it was intact after the settlement agreement.
Correct. We are going back to the status quo before the litigation because the opinion of the court did not ever resolve it as a matter of factual finding or legal finding, nor did the settlement agreement that was entered into.
Okay, all right, so I'll make sure that was, that was clear. Okay, so we have five people that have requested to speak. Mr. Grover? Yes, you're up, if you want to.
2516 fails to demonstrate, and also 2524 fails to demonstrate that the Board of Supervisors has fulfilled the constitutional requirements outlined in Article 4, Part 1, Section 1, Subsection 5 or 8 of the Arizona Constitution. Given its unlawful nature, I reiterate the demand that I made during the call to the public, that each of you present a certified copy of your Arizona bond in accordance with the Arizona Revised Statutes, Chapter 38, Titles 5 and 8.
Okay. All right, next up is Mr. Steve Dickinson. Mr. Dickinson?
My name is Stephen Dickinson, and I live in Sierra Vista. First off, I want to say that I'm very pleased with the progress being shown by the current Board of Supervisors. You have had to rebuild our trust in the county Board of Supervisors due to an unfortunate number of incidents left by the previous Board of Supervisors. However, I wish to express my concerns over Resolutions 2516 and 2524. After reviewing the content you have written for both resolutions, I was unable to find any verbiage confirming your requirement to follow the election and voting requirements as written in Article 4, Part 1, Section 1, Subparagraphs 5 and 8 of the Arizona Constitution. It is my hope that this is only a clerical error, and you will rewrite the resolutions to acknowledge and follow the requirements of the Arizona Constitution. If this was not a clerical error, and you hope to go around the constitutional legislative requirements, we will have no choice but to file a legal argument against the board. This could entail securing a copy of each of your Arizona insurance bonds as written in the Arizona Revised Statutes, Title 38, Chapter 2, Articles 5 and 8. This is not something that we would take lightly. Again, I hope this is only a clerical error, and you will follow the strict voting requirements of the Arizona Constitution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, Mr. Dan LaChance.
Good morning again, supervisors. I'm speaking on Agenda Item 5, Vote No on this resolution. It is unconstitutional and therefore in violation of the Supreme Law of Arizona. You must not pass it in its current form. I further add that if you should pass this resolution and bring this unlawfully to another election, we will have to deal with that through the Arizona bond process and also include the current violation of the Equal Protection Clause of the U.S. Constitution's 14th Amendment. There's a real bad problem going on there with the mail-in ballot, as I've discussed with you, both Mr. Antonori and Mr. Crosby. So we need to get these things in order before we can actually have a valid election. So, again, as I stated in the call to the public, I am requesting certified copies of each of your Arizona bonds. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next up is Ms. Kim Depew. Ms. Depew, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Kim Depew, Sierra Vista, Arizona. I had a lot of things to say, but all my questions have been answered about the jail district, and whether we're happy or unhappy with those answers, I think you've satisfied. The only thing that's left is to decide whether we're going to vote yes or no to enact a tax to build a jail. All, all the other stuff is noise. However, one last thing, you spoke of a balloon payment, balloon payment or payments on the bond, and then dissolution of the district. Can we be absolutely certain that the district will be dissolved if you are not sitting in these seats? And then on a separate subject, just to save time, on your Action Items 8 through 11, I'm really happy to see you following through with withdrawing from associations that you deem unnecessary. Thank you.
All right, next up is Ms. Tricia Jaredette. Ms. Jaredette, are you there?
Yes, I am, supervisors.
Ma'am, you have three minutes.
Tricia Jaredette in Sierra Vista. I've, I've been puzzling over for some time the apparent change in the previous hostility to the proposal on the jail and jail district, and now an apparent, or even obvious, support for the new framing of it. And I, I think I figured out that the difference is that this proposal does not include the budget or the amount of money required to operate and maintain the jail. And then I will further speculate that that is because the operation and maintenance would then have to be approved by the Board of Supervisors every year as part of the sheriff's request for operational funds. So I'll, I'll just say that it looks to me like a power play, if I'm right, that this is why it's so different in dollar amount, and why the change from opposition to support. I guess I think that's, that's interesting, and I think that's the reason, and I hope other people will think about why there is such a difference now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. I just want to note that there was another individual that submitted a comment but asked not to speak, and they are in support of the resolution. And that's all the people that have listed on there to speak. Is there any discussion amongst the board?
Sure, I have some discussion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crosby?
I would note that as we have, you, you spoke out at the beginning of this conversation, we have to go by what the courts say that we're going to do, and we can't do any more and we can't do any less than what they say, or we're just asking for, for problems. I have always agreed that the Constitution says it's supposed to be 60%, but guess what? The courts didn't address that, so we're stuck with what we got. I repeatedly talked about the due process violations that the Board of Supervisors was involved in, in the whole lead-up to the jail tax election. And so I want to talk about this concept, de facto versus de jour, de jour meaning the legal way, the right way, versus the de facto, which is what we're stuck with. And so that's what we're stuck with, is a de facto portion of this. I always thought by reading all of the, the ARSs that I could find on the jail district, that it looked like it needed two elections. And I didn't see a signature requirement in the jail district ARSs like for other special districts. That concludes my comments.
All right, let's go, Mr. DeChambeau, any comments? Okay, the motion before the board is to...
Excuse me. Sorry.
Oh, I got to close the public hearing.
Yes, there's a public hearing.
Thanks, 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 thanks. Okay, all right. All right, so we are closed public hearing. All right, now we will go back to board discussion.
So I'm going to ask that you then consider item number six. There was no motion related to item number four, five. It was just the public hearing. I know it's a little abnormal from how we normally do things, so I just want to be clear. Item six is the actual motion to continue the establishment.
I got you now, okay. All right, thanks. So now, we will go to item number six. So can I get a motion for item number six, please?
I move to adopt Resolution 25-24, ordering the continued establishment of the Cochise County Jail District contingent upon voter approval of an excise tax at the November 4th, 2025 election.
Second. Okay, we have three speakers that have requested to speak on Agenda Item number six. Mr. Grover, you're up again. You, all right, Mr. Dickinson, you're up next. You already spoke, and then Mr. LaChance. All right, sir, you have, you have three minutes.
Good morning again. So vote no on this resolution also, it's unconstitutional. And I want to address Mr. Crosby's issue concerning the perceived need for, or lack of need for, signatures. The statute cannot be done by itself. It must be done in accordance with the, with the Supreme Law of the Land, the Constitution. And the Arizona Constitution's Article 4, Part 1, Section 1, Subparagraph 8 is very clear in stating that for all initiatives and referendums conducted at county level and below, you must have a certain percentage of the electors sign signatures on petitions stating that they approve that this go on to the ballot. Without those signatures on petitions, this is an unconstitutional act. That's what we will challenge if this moves forward, one of several things. So while, while the provision is there in the ARSs, and it allows for legislation at the county level and below, that legislation cannot be done simply by you three. It has to be done with all of us, too. We have to sign petitions stating that a certain percentage of us, at least, right? 10 or 15%, depending on whether you call it a referendum or a initiative, have to sign in order for it to go on the ballot. That's clear. And so that's going to be the issue, is that you must do this constitutionally. In order to do it constitutionally, you have to accomplish that. So I just wanted to make that clear again, and that we vote no on this resolution as well, until such time as we get the resolutions properly written and the actual laws properly performed, so that we can have a constitutional election of, by, and for the people. Without that, we can't have that. So please, let's make this, let's get this done right. If that means stopping here and now and restarting it, then let's stop here and now, and let's restart, and let's do it right. If we do it right, I think we can actually have the, the will of the people heard. Thank you for your time.
All right, we had one additional person that did not request to speak, that offered to comment, and they are in support of the... to comment, and they are in support of the resolution. All right, with that, any discussion amongst the board?
Only to reiterate what I've already said, I'm not going to do that.
I would just like to comment that, you know, we are bound by the settlement, period. And I know that you may see it differently, but as being a new board member that came into this mess, if you were that sure that you were absolutely right, then that you should just duck it out and have that heard, but the judge wouldn't hear it. Because there's a lot of discussion about whether that law that you're talking about, the 60%, was meant for county and below. And I just don't have that sound decision-making that would go with what you're saying. So I am bound by the settlement that we went forth and put a lot of our reputation online to do because we thought it was the right thing. So with that, I'm bound to the decision that I'm going to make for those reasons.
There's no discussion, there's no discussion. All right, so I just want to make clear, this is a technicality that we experienced as a result of the settlement because the court did not give us specific action. We had an election in May of '23 that established a jail district. The board is required, since we were not told that that election was null or that existing jail district was nullified or was dissolved, that it technically still exists. And this motion is only to continue that until the November 4th election when the voters will decide whether or not, that's all this resolution is. It's just a continuation for the legal purpose so that we can still function under the current jail district to provide Commander Bradshaw the resources he needs because right now that's the way it's been set up to run. So we're only extending this until the November election. Then afterwards, the voters will have their say on the outcome of that. But for now, this is where we're at. So this is only to continue the current existing jail district until the November election. That's what this is. So let's make sure everybody understands, this is not taking this thing out past that. This is only for the legal, I guess what, how Mr. Crea said, because we did not get the specific guidance from the court, technically the jail district as it was established in '23 still exists. So that's all this is, it's a technicality. So that's what we're voting on today. So with that, any other discussion?
No.
All right, so the motion before the board is to adopt Resolution 24-25, ordering the continued establishment of the Cochise County Jail District. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes three to zero. All right, next we will go to Agenda Item Number Seven. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to adopt Resolution 25-23, amending the Development Services Fee Schedule for Inspection Services provided by Development Services effective August the 5th, 2025.
Second. All right, so the motion before the board will begin with an explanation by Ms. McLaughlin.
Arizona Department of Housing, ADOH. The Arizona Department of Housing updates its fee schedule roughly annually typically aligned with the fiscal year. With adjustments for inflation and administrative costs and budget needs, we're required to change charge the exact same amount as ADH/OH by state law in the inspection agreements. Our inspection agreement was attached to the item in the agenda.
A little feedback there.
These fees are user-paid charges designed to recoup the costs of processing permits, conducting inspections, and managing administrative tasks, ensuring that those who request the services pay for them rather than the general taxpayer. Per state law, any fee must reasonably relate and depry the expense of the service provided. Amendments to our fee schedule, homepage of the county's websites, must be posted before any public hearing. A notice was posted on May 29th, and if you'd like to see Development Services Fee Schedule, we have a link on our department page. This is what it looks like, and these are the current inspection fees for manufactured And here is the proposed, what is proposed by this amendment. On the left is the current fee, on the right is the proposed fee. Global home inspections are increasing by $50. Factory buildings are increasing by $1 a linear square foot. Reinspection and extension fees are also increasing by $10 and will be $50. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and just a reminder, this is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, sir. Ms. Crosby. Ms. McLaughlin, are we still doing inspections for Douglas?
Yes.
Okay, what impact does this have on your office and this plan to increase fees?
That would be the fees charged for inspections within Douglas. And I believe we also do inspections in Tombstone and Benson, also similar agreements. So this will be the exact fee charged to residents in those locations as well as within the county at large.
Okay, so other cities, they don't have that arranged, the same arrangement with the county that Douglas does?
No.
Okay, I'd just like to point out that that's another example of a redistribution to Douglas, and I'm not making an issue of it, I'm just pointing it out to you because I knew about it already. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
I can talk to you later, Bob, right? Okay, I'll do that.
All right. Now I don't see anyone on here, so motion before the board, I guess we'll go back. Any discussion amongst the board?
Could...
No, sir, thank you very much.
Point of objection for the chair, sorry, could you just formally hit that gapple for us for it to open and close the public hearing?
Oh, I gotta do that again for this? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm glad I got you guys here to keep me straight on this order stuff. Okay, so we will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak? Anyone going once, going twice? All right, we will close the public meeting, and now we will go back to the board discussion. Anyone got anything to say? None? All right, so let's go back, go back to the motion. All right, so the motion before the board is to approve Agenda Item Number Seven, adopt Resolution 25-23. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. All right, next is Action Items, Agenda Item Number Eight. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the withdrawal of Cochise County Board of Supervisors from the Association of Defense Communities, ADC.
Second.
All right, any discussion? No? All those in favor of approving item number eight to withdraw Cochise County from the Association of Defense Communities, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. All right, next one, motion number nine, please.
I move to approve the withdrawal of Cochise County Board of Supervisors from the Coalition of Arizona and New Mexico Counties.
Second. All right, so the motion before the board, any discussion?
Motion before the board is to approve the withdrawal of Cochise County from the Coalition of Arizona and New Mexico Counties, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. All right, number 10, please.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the termination of the Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, between the city of Sierra Vista and Cochise County that authorizes both entities to administer programs and receive and disperse funds for the Upper San Pedro Partnership, USPP, and terminate membership in the USPP effective August 5th, 2025.
Second.
All right, we have motion second, any discussion? None? All right, motion before the board...
Chairman Antoniore, we do have a speaker on this.
Oh. Which one is that? Oh, I see her. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, it's Ms. Gerardette. Ms. Gerardette, are you there?
I am, yep.
Sorry, I was just moving along. So you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning again supervisors, Tricia Gerardette. It's actually, my comment actually extends beyond the withdrawal from the USPP. And I noted that on item 11, where you have committee board assignments that you are proposing apparently to continue membership in the CCRN, the Cochise Conservation and Recharge Network. And I don't know, I didn't have time to look up the agreement for the CCRN, but I wonder if membership in the USPP might be a required component of participating in the CCRN. And I don't know if anyone else had the chance to look into how those two might be connected. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Okay, the motion before the board is Agenda Item Number 10, to terminate the IGA between the city Sierra Vista, Cochise County that authorizes entities to administer programs under the Upper San Pedro Partnership. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Can I get Agenda Item Number 11, please?
I move to approve to renew and/or revise committee appointments for members of the Board of Supervisors and executive staff for the 2025-26 fiscal year and approve continuing annual membership for 2025-26 with payment of associated dues as described herein.
Second. All right, motion before the board, any discussion? I'm sorry.
I would have continued to turn it down, but that's okay.
All right.
We made some progress.
Yeah. All right, so the motion before the board is to approve committee appointments for the members and pay the associated dues for fiscal years '25, '26. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number 12, please.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve transfer from County Capital Projects Fund contingency to the Facilities Department for roofing at 1415 West Melody Lane, Building A in Bisbee in the amount of $235,528.20.
Second.
All right, so we have Mr. Crowley here, does anybody briefly tell us what this is, sir?
This is a replacement, roof replacement on Building A. It'd be the second one in its history, but it is, like I say, 40 years old. It's even a little better than that, but that's all it is, just replacing the roof.
All right, any discussion? All right, so the motion before the board is to approve the transfer of capital funds to pay for a roof on Building A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, funding is approved. Building A will be getting a new roof. Okay, next is Agenda Item Number 13. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the transfer from the County Capital Projects Fund contingency to the Facilities Department to replace four Douglas mini-split systems and 19 gas pack units at the juvenile detention center located at 100 Colonial de Salud in Sierra Vista in the amount of $317,230.23.
Second. All right, motion, you want to comment on that?
Sure. Again, this is a continuation of the long-term plan that we had to replace all the HVAC systems. These again are well exceeded their lifespan, those are all over 20 years old.
The new ones are going to be more efficient and save us a little electrical cost. What are they? I'm not sure what they are.
HVAC units?
It said, there's specific name, mini-split, gas pack.
Right, and that, those mini-splits are used in certain areas just to work on a certain room, plus then also there is 19 of the gas packs that are both, they operate as HVAC and heaters.
Okay, what makes something a gas pack? It runs on natural gas?
Well, it runs on natural gas and electricity both.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Chairman.
Yeah.
As I understand, there's only two juveniles in the detention center. I'm wondering, are we having that, I mean, I've not heard yet how many juveniles we have in that area?
I understand your concern. Part of that building is juvenile detention, but we also have a Superior Court in there, we have a clerk's office in there, we actually have two judicial systems in there.
In the same area?
Yes, that same building.
Is that by the so-called new hospital?
Yes, it is. It's the one, the building right there on the corner.
So, but we say it's for the juvenile detention center.
We've always referred to it as juvenile detention.
Just the whole county building?
The whole county building?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
No, sir.
None? All right, so the motion before the board is to approve funds for the capital project for the juvenile detention center. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number 14.
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt Resolution 25-26, authorizing Cochise County's voluntary participation in the U.S. Election Assistance Commission, EAC, for Field Services Program, FSP.
Second.
All right, I have a motion seconded. Let's go to Ms. Avant real quickly if she can explain it.
Thank you, Chair Antoniore, Vice Chair Crosby, Supervisor Gomez. Today is in front of you is just an agreement to participate in the voluntary program called the Field Service Program. It's under the Elections Assistance Commission through the Help American Vote Act. The purpose of participating in the Field Service Program is to confirm that the system in use is identical to the one certified by the EAC.
Questions?
What part does the state play in that relationship, the state of Arizona?
Thank you, Vice Chair Crosby, Chair Antoniore, Supervisor Gomez for that question. So the Secretary of State did sign off for the participation of the Cochise County to do this, however, that's it. They just signed off to be able to do the Field Service Program. This Field Service Program and EAC is established by Congress.
Okay, so what I'm wondering is the checks and balances involved between the federal government and the state, but if you don't know that, that's okay. I don't know is an okay answer.
They're aware of the program and they just signed off on it. They do not participate in the program. They just acknowledge that we're asking to do the program, but they don't participate in the Field Service Program.
Keyword is voluntary.
Voluntary, yes. And we would be the first county in Arizona to participate in this Field Service Program. It was established in 2020, August of 2023, and there's two published reports in Hawaii, Douglas County, Nebraska, and another one for Delaware, but we would be the first in Arizona to do it.
Thank you.
Can you just explain what is the Field Service?
So basically, there's four components to the Field Service Program. They would observe and verify that the certified election system and software, the ESNS verification procedures were followed during the review. They would perform a conformance review of the election voting system, EVS, and we utilize the 6.3.0.0 within this county and observe, assist, and document hash verification of the sample of the voting equipment to ensure the trusted hash is the same hash value that's within our voting systems, and then observe the physical voting system and facility security throughout the project.
And this is to cover 2026?
It would, it's just from here on out.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Joe.
All right, we have a speaker, Ms. Morse, are you there? Allison Morse, she's on Teens, right? Yeah.
Can you hear me okay?
There you go, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much again supervisors, and I will make this brief, I'd just like to express my support for our county's voluntary participation in this program. If conducted as outlined on their website and in their video, this program will enhance trust and confidence in our elections and issue I believe is of great concern to all of us. The EAC's Field Services Program, as Ms. Avant just said, will confirm that the election system we use is identical to the one certified by the EAC, will also demonstrate that our ESNS verification procedures are followed properly. It'll ensure our election voting system is in compliance and document the physical security of our election facilities. This will involve thorough inspections of the aforementioned and generate a report that should be made public for added transparency. In short, if done properly, it should delay any concerns some voters may still have about the legitimacy of our elections and thereby diminish or eliminate future false narratives. For those who may be interested, as Ms. Avant just said, there are, what I see, two sample reports posted... For those who may be interested, as Ms. Avant just said, there are, what I see, two sample reports posted on the E A C's website for the Field Services Program. And as she said, one is for the state of Hawaii and the other is for Douglas County, Nebraska. They are both well organized and easy to read. And I do think that a similar report for Coches County would be of great benefit to our voters. And I appreciate the willingness of our Elections Department to voluntarily participate in this program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, any, any further discussion?
None.
No, sir. All right, the motion before the board is to approve resolution twenty-five, twenty-six, authorizing the voluntary participation of Coches County in the U S Election Assistance Commission's Field Services Program. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes three, two, zero. All right, next up, agenda item number fifteen. Can I get a motion?
Oh, sorry. I move to adopt resolution twenty-five dash twenty-five, directing the County Treasurer to remit funds collected from taxes levied in common school districts, not within a high school district.
Second, all right, I don't think we need an explanation. You may need an explanation from the treasurer? No? All right, if she, she wants to. All right, so again, no discussion? Any discussion? None? All right, so the motion before the board is to adopt resolution twenty-five, twenty-five, directing Treasury to emit funds to collected from, I'm sorry, remit funds collected from taxes levied on common school districts, not within a high school district. All, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three, two, zero. All right, item sixteen, please.
Mr. Chair, I move, we approve the Drug, Gang, and Violent Crime Control Grant Agreement, D C dash two-six dash zero-two-one between the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission, A C J C, and Coches County in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighteen cents, effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Seconded, I'll second it. All right, does anybody need to speak to the county attorney on this to give clarification or ask questions? No? Masuko, do you want to say anything?
We have.
Oh, oh, you got somebody that's gonna speak on your behalf, okay?
Yes, Kenny Reed is Chief of Staff at the County Attorney's Office. We're just asking that you approve this grant, and we've had it for at least a couple of decades. It provides a good amount of funding for prosecuting attorneys, two of them, that are in our drug unit and prosecute drug and violent crime. So, and it was brought to my attention, there may have been some questions about fund allocation in a previous meeting, so I can address those.
I, unless you remember what the questions were, I don't, I don't remember one, so.
Then it's probably not relevant anymore.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reeves. All right, so any other discussion, members? None? All right, so the, the question before the board is to approve the Drug, Gang, and Violent Control Grant Agreement, D C twenty-six zero-two-one. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three, two, zero. All right, number seventeen, please.
I move to approve the Crime Victim Compensation Grant Agreement, V C dash two-six dash zero-zero-two between the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission and the Coches County Attorney's Office in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, fourteen dollars, effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second, all right, again, any discussion? We need anything from the County Attorney's Office? Anybody want to? All right, you, go ahead. Let you.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Jillian News. I oversee the victim services at the Coches County Attorney's Office, and I'm asking to approve this agenda item as this grant is important to our victims of Coches County. And the funds will be used for a mandated part-time victim compensation coordinator, and the remainder of the funds will be used for victims of crimes here in Coches County.
Any questions, officer? None, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the question before the board is to approve the Crime Victims Compensation Grant Agreement, V C twenty-six zero-zero-two. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three, zero. All right, under state and federal legislation, just so you're aware, I provided a list of legislation, Ms. Gilman, who I'm sure she's forward to Mr. Sullivan, who is here, who will be attending our meeting shortly after this, so we can discuss items of interest regarding legislation with our state legislature. And then federal legislation, I think we, we will discuss later, but we have issues, of course, with Fort Huachuca and Electronic Proving Ground that we will eventually have to have a discussion on. Mr. Casey and I are going over to meet with the E P G commander, and I'll report back to you guys on the, on the outcome of that, but as you know, there's an effort to downsize a lot of the operations on Fort Huachuca, which will negatively impact the county. So that's why we're gonna take a key role in making sure that doesn't happen. With that, we'll go to, anyway, do you guys have any comments on state or federal legislation? That you're concerned, not this time?
No, no, we'll just, may bring it up for the next meeting.
All right, all right, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna be going to Mr. Sullivan here shortly after, and his team. Next, we'll go to Ms. Gilman with her report as the county administrator. Ms. Gilman, floor is yours.
Just one item I want to make sure the board is aware of, Mr. Chair, members of the board, the, I confirmed with the Arizona Department of Revenue that the jail tax did, they did cease collection on July thirty-first at midnight, so now it's up to the businesses to make sure they remove that tax from their books and, and not, not charge people, but we've done our part and they've done theirs.
Any? That's it, all right, current events, any, Mr. Crosby?
Okay, everybody should know who Tina Peters is. Tina Peters held the official title of Mesa County Clerk and Recorder during the twenty-twenty election. She had a federal duty to preserve election records. She took that responsibility seriously, and for that, she now sits behind bars. She did her job that of recording, oddly for the recorder, recording election evidence. So this Gold Star Mother caller, okay, alarm, she would, Peters was alarmed because the federal law clearly mandates that all election data logs and material must be preserved for a minimum of twenty-two months in all fifty states, and that's a fifty, U S Code fifty-two. And the, the Secretary of State in Colorado ordered that, that these be subjected to a so, quote, trusted build by Dominion Voting Machines in Mesa County only six months after the twenty-twenty election. Yet here, Colorado Secretary of State moved prematurely to override the system, potentially destroying critical evidence that, and Colorado appears to be the only state where the Secretary of State ordered the so-called trusted build, which is really an erasure prior to the mandated twenty-two month retention period. But wait, there's more. This, this article is Federal Court of Appeals Rules Texas Can Enforce Law Requiring I D For Mail In ballots, which is a, that's a biggie, and that's August fifth, that just came out today. That you may recall that I asked for ten times more election, or shoots a signature verifiers. And if it would have been up to me, I would have had them placed at several locations around the county to look at ballot signature envelopes, I should say, signatures on, on the ballot envelopes and compare them to I Ds that they had. But obviously, I don't know what, what this effect is gonna have on us. This was in Texas, I just thought I'd mention that because it is another huge issue. This is back from the June eighteenth, Representative Abe Hamaday fires off a letter to the Department of Justice requesting investigation into Run Back Election Services breach of protocol in two thousand and twenty-four elections in several states. And this is, this is a point brought up by at least one of our speakers. Should we have corporations in charge of our voting? My opinion, we should not. That concludes my comments. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Ms. Gomez, anything from District Two?
Yes, I have several things from District Two. First of all, this weekend is going to be the Val Kilmer, remembering Val Kilmer, a tombstone tribute, so they're gonna be having a panel Friday night. I guess with Mescal Studios. Then during Saturday, there's a walk down in honor of Val Kilmer. There's costume contest, there's gonna be a lot of discussion, and then Saturday evening is going to be the Doors Tributes concert, which I'm planning to attend, and then the next day, quite a few things. The other thing too is September fifth, make a note that it will be the pick game between Douglas and Bisbee, which will be a hundred and fifty years of competition. It's the longest competitive football sport in the United States. The mayor is inviting everyone from the Trump to Siskomani to probably all of us. It's also gonna be the day that we actually do the shovel into the ground for the port of entry, so it's kind of a dual thing. It's gonna be a big game. This is really big. So a hundred and fifty years, the pick between Douglas and Bisbee, so make note of that. Come down to Douglas, check it out. It's gonna be a lot of fun. The other thing I want to talk about is I'm always for trying to promote the arts and promote Douglas so that we can become the economic viable monster so that we can give you guys money next time, in the next five years. But as the Douglas Art Association presents Hewitt Studios and Jody Bodeco, August fifth through the thirtieth. They have a reception on August the ninth from ten to one, and if you ever want to see a beautiful building, you should go to the art gallery. It was the old library that Philip Dodge built, and it's just beautiful. It's a beautiful building, so if you feel like having this experience, go down to Douglas, and we're gonna put this on the website, and don't forget September fifth. Thank you.
All right, I just wanna, I got a text from somebody that wanted me to talk about, I'm, as some of you may know, I'm a, I'm a retired military veteran, and the Pierce Sunsites V F W host ninety-nine seventy-seven is gonna be hosting a Veteran Community Connect event in, in association with the Arizona Coalition of Military Families on September twelfth, so you got some time, it's like a month, a month or so from now. They're gonna have a workshop between nine in the morning till two in the afternoon, and I guess they're gonna offer lunch, too, you get a lunch out of the deal. But it's gonna discuss veteran benefits, mental health issues, assistance with employment, assistance with housing, food, food assistance in the food pantry, and as well as some other items, if anybody's interested in attending. It's on the V F W's website and/or the community page for the Coches Sunsite, uh, community page. Also, they have a farmer's market there every Friday, if anybody's in the neighborhood, you can swing by, they call it the Boardwalk Market, but anyways, that's all I have. Before we adjourn and go to our next meeting, anybody, any comments?
Mr. Chair, I wish only well for Douglas, starting with your election as their representative, and you're just the best there.
All right, all right, so, so, no, no comments from the peanut gallery. All right, so next up, we have a meeting immediately after this, barring a five-minute recess for us to re-tank up on soda and take a bathroom break with the County Supervisors Association. We're gonna have that meeting right here, we're gonna do that in about five minutes. So with that, any last minute, none? All right, we are adjourned.